This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 5th, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners at 4:00 PM. We had a work session with the Historic Preservation Committee that is bringing forth recommendations on preservation of historic structures in Currituck County. At this time, I'd like to recognize Reverend Keith Hamm from Palace Point Christian Church to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful for the opportunity to come to you in prayer at this time. I thank you for these leaders. I ask, Lord, that you would bless them, give them wisdom, guidance, and direction, that they might help the people of this county in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Have a good evening. Next item is approval of agenda. I would like to remove the report from Ms. Janet Rose about North Carolina Fisheries Commission. She could not make it tonight and has been rescheduled for the first meeting in November. Do we have a motion for approval?
Senue.
Have a motion for approval. It's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is public hearings. Public hearing in action on Almarl Regional Waste, Almarl Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Currituck County requests adoption of the Almarl Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the county's citizenry and to mitigate the impact of identified hazardous risk. Would that be you, Mr. Scanlon?
I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. At your last meeting, Mary Beth Noons, our Emergency Management Director, presented the regional, Almarl Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan to the board. As part of the CRS requirement for adoption, you are required to have a public hearing. Ten days after the public hearing, you can, are positioned then to take under consideration the resolution that's in the package. So again, a part of that process is tonight is to actually have a public hearing.
Okay. Is anyone having questions for Mr. Scanlon? I guess for clarification purposes, are you saying after we hold the public hearing tonight, we can adopt it or at the next meeting?
No, sir. You'll have to wait ten days.
So it's actually a three-meeting process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item that did not sign up? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
And we will schedule this for a future meeting for your vote for action.
For adoption at the next board meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next agenda item is public hearing in action on Currituck County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. I believe that would be you again.
I certainly will take that. We have with us tonight Angela Welch, which is our RPO representative, and she has naughtyed with NC DOT. I think they're actually going to present this item. The staff has been working with both the RPO and NC DOT in a proposed road amendment or addition to our comprehensive transportation plan, and with that, they will come up and present the amendment.
All right. Since you are company tonight, we'd like to ask you to introduce yourself for everyone, and then the floor is yours.
My name is Nazia Sardar. I'm with NC DOT.
Ma'am.
Yes. Oh, here.
Yeah. Yeah, so they can still see you on the screen. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nazia Sardar, and I'm with NC DOT's Transportation Planning Branch.
I'm Lee Calhagen. I'm with the Transportation Planning Branch.
My name is Angela Wells. I'm the Almarl RPO Director.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and what we're going to talk about today is the Currituck County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. The purpose of today's presentation is to adopt the amendment to the Currituck County Transportation Plan. The original CTP, Comprehensive Transportation Plan, was adopted back in 2011. The multimodal maps were adopted, and I'm sure probably many people here were the ones that adopted these plans. The only changes that we made from April to now of this year were recommendations to the highway and bicycle maps, and what we're seeking today is resolution for the adoption of the amendment. So what is a comprehensive transportation plan? I'm sure many of you know that it's a thirty-year long-range transportation plan. It includes with it multimodal maps, and really what it is, is a vision for the county in regards to transportation for highway, transit, rail, bike, and pedestrian. It's not fiscally constrained, however, it's required for, it's required to have recommendations for transportation for funding from NC DOT. We look at local land use plans, and the CTP shows current and future conditions. And we'll move on to the next slide. So again, today, as I mentioned before, the only changes that we made were to the highway map and the bicycle map, and this came from, this was a request made by the county to go ahead and update these maps and to have an amendment to the CTP. This is what an adoption sheet looks like. This is what, you know, when you submit your resolution, if you adopt today, the date and the adoption will go onto this map. The Almarl RPO will endorse the map. The Transportation Planning Branch at NC DOT will recommend the map, and the NC DOT Board of Transportation will adopt all these maps. And this is, you know, this is the entire highway map for Currituck County, and all these recommendations were made back in 2011. And the only, did we add the inset? It's not here. Okay. The only addition that we made, and I know it's very small, but if you look to the north west of the map, there's an inset that you'll see there, and the only recommendation that we're making, yeah, right there, is the east-west connector recommendation. And when we made this recommendation, we had to realign the 168 bypass. That's a recommendation due to design standards. When you have two major highways like that, it can't intersect in one area, so we had to kind of realign it. And of course, that isn't funded yet. That's also a vision, but we went back and forth with Currituck County a little bit, and we decided that this was the best alternative for the east-west connector to be a boulevard. This is the public transportation map, and it hasn't changed. It's untouched. The bicycle map, the only additions that we made to it were bicycle, bicycle pads from the Almarl Regional Bike Plan that were adopted by all ten counties, I think, back in 2013. So just to make sure that, you know, it's all there together. This is the pedestrian map. Again, it wasn't touched. It's remained the same. So I guess the next question is, what happens after you adopt today? As mentioned before, the only thing that is going to happen from here on out is, we're going to recommend it at the Transportation Planning Branch. Angela and the RPO, they're going to endorse it, and DOT will adopt it. And another thing I'd like to mention is that you will get a chance to review the amendment in its entirety before we close out the plan. Here's my contact, Lee's contact, and Angela's contact. If you need, if you need this information, please let me know after the meeting. And is there any questions?
Any board members have questions? I guess the process after we adopt it and it gets to the RPO, and I guess the RPO would adopt it, then it goes into the state pot of projects, and then it works its way from a scoring, it would have to be scored, and then it works its way like every other project does, correct?
That's correct. And even though it hasn't been adopted by you yet, Currituck and Camden County, Camden County has another section of it in Camden County. They've requested that they be put into the scoring process, so it's already in there. It's already been out for public comment. I believe public comment closes the fifteenth. We haven't had any comments, so it's already in there.
Okay.
And it'll go through the process, the scoring process, and then we'll know December of 2016 what projects will get funded. However, that's funding for, the last process, when the Mid-Currituck Bridge got funded, that was funding for five years, so we're looking out five years or six years. If this does get funded, as soon as it would be is six years.
Okay.
That's the important thing to remember. We're talking, this is five years out.
Yeah. Okay.
Quick question. The, in Set A, we have a much better version in our thing than that. Where is that coming, where is that going to intersect 168 right now? I mean, do you know, like, which store, which?
Like, the area?
The east-west connector is what you're talking about.
Right. Yeah. Like, where it comes in.
I don't believe the exact literal route at this time is determined. It would be based upon engineering environmental study, you know, once it progresses. Right now, we just wanted to get a representation roughly of where it would be.
Because it looks like, welcome to North Carolina, and here's the east-west connector. I mean, it's cheated way, way far north. I, whatever. I guess my question is, how south is that vice, like, Ballahack Road, which is not significantly further to the north?
A lot of, a lot of the east-west piece of it, I think, and, Dan, you can correct me, Angela, is, a lot of it is looking at economic development in the northeastern region.
Okay.
And, and so...
I know some of the things we talked about.
It ties into the Kimley-Horn Study area.
Okay.
Is where we're talking about connecting to 17.
There's going to be, there's going to be a lot of jockeying, I'm sure, for position as to where it does go, with all said and done, depending on the counties that are involved and...
Yes, sir. I think what everybody needs to remember is with the Governor's Bond Initiative, trying to get Highway 17 upgraded to an interstate, this is mightily, mightily important for Currituck and Camden.
Yes.
And the details would be worked out, but the concept is what we're after.
And if I can add to, these are just lines on a map right now, but when it gets down to, when it gets funded is when it starts going into the environmental planning and all that. The public does have a chance to comment. The DOT doesn't come in and say, this is where we're putting the road. They'll say, this is the best location, and then there's a lot of public comment, public workshops and things like that. But that doesn't start until the project's actually funded.
Okay. Thank you.
And what I'll add to that, too, is, just like everybody said, there's that, there's the Governor's twenty-five-year plan that he has right now, which is to upgrade 17 to an interstate. Not only that, but I believe what I got from the locals is that there's a, there's possibility of commercial and industrial development that is expected in the Moyoc area, and they're opening an eco-industrial park, I believe, as well, in Camden.
Camden.
In Camden County. So with that, and with the study that Kimley-Horn is doing, all that combined, it just made sense to have the east-west connector go through those areas where there will be development. That was the thought process behind this.
All right. Any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. I had no one signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak that did not sign up? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Currituck County Comprehensive Transportation Plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a motion for approval, a second. Any further discussion?
Second.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and we thank you so very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
I assume you drove from Raleigh?
Yes.
Thank you.
They are now headed to Camden to do the same presentation to the Camden Board of Commissioners. They will be leaving us.
Next item, old business. Consideration in action on PB 1513, Currituck County Solar Arrays. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, U standards to implement standards for solar array setbacks, groundwater testing, and performance guarantees. I believe this will be our third or fourth hearing of this, so I hope we're prepared to move forward. So with that, I will ask the board if anyone is prepared to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the change to the UDO as provided by staff as written, with the exception of, like, to change in paragraph G, the setback to 300 feet, which would be in keeping of what was done in Moyoc, as, and the performance guarantee, I believe, I would like to see us adopt the two-year reevaluation of the restoration funding and signed off by the engineer as staff had recommended.
So that's a 115% minus salvageable...
Negative. I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Minus the salvageable to be reassessed every two years.
Correct.
And you are asking for the 300-foot setback.
Correct.
And that is your motion.
That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No?
No.
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 I believe motion carries four to three. Is that correct? Okay.
I guess.
Let me just do a quick hand if you voted yea for the motion. Okay. It's four to three. All right. Thank you. New business. Resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the sale of county-owned property located in Almarl Sound Beach Estates, and that's in Jarvisburg. Would that be Mr. McCree?
I can present that. This is the first step when the county seeks to dispose of real property that it owns. These properties identified in the resolution are properties that over the years the county has acquired through tax foreclosure due to the property owners failing to pay property tax. This resolution, now that we've received an offer from a prospective buyer, if you adopt this, will set into place a period in which any other interested parties in acquiring these properties may submit an upset bid. If an upset bid is presented, then we will continue going through that process until such times we have no further bidders, and then a final resolution will be brought to the Board of Commissioners for you to adopt for entry of an agreement with the final bidder for acquisition of these properties.
All right. Questions for Mr. McCree?
Mr. McCree, these sections, what size are they, and what is the tax value? I see they're being sold for $1,600 apiece.
Yes. These are non-conforming lots in Almarl Sound Beach at the south end of the county. They are not of a size individually that they can be built upon, so what has happened over the years is the county has acquired a number of these lots through tax foreclosures. It typically is an adjacent property owner who, over time, tries to piece together a larger piece of property and create a lot that will meet the county's minimum lot size and allow for them to actually build a, either a structure in Almarl Sound Beach or to add on to a existing structure. So the, these values are in line with what has historically been the value offered by persons seeking to acquire these lots and what the county has typically ended up selling these lots for.
And what we're doing tonight is establishing someone can come in and...
Start an upset bid process. That's correct.
For ten, for ten days?
Yes.
After tonight?
Yes.
Any further questions?
So this allows someone else to come up and offer a higher bid?
Correct.
For ten days?
Starts to bid and process.
That's correct.
And then after someone offers a higher bid, it goes for another ten days, correct?
That's correct. And then that process will continue until such times as there are no further bids.
Right.
What's the alternative to this?
The alternative is that the county continues to maintain ownership of these lots. They do not, they do not go on the tax roll and are not generating any tax revenue.
Got it. I didn't know if there was any other bid process that...
There, whether there are other methods by which the county can sell property. We could also do an auction process.
This is just one of many ways to be able to do what you want to do.
This is one of several statutory ways that a county may dispose of real property.
How is this plan on being advertised, if it, if at all?
It will be, the calls for being advertised, yes, the clerk to the board commissioner shall cause notice of the proposed sale to be published. It'll be published in a newspaper.
All right. Any further questions?
And real quick, is it to be understood that all of the properties are part of the bidding process? In other words...
Yes.
To upset this bid, you'd have to bid $1,650 per parcel.
That would be the intention, because what we now have received is, is an offer from one individual to acquire all these lots for the stated price.
Okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none.
Just one more thing. This is all county-owned property as we speak. It's not hurting anybody, taking anything away from anybody.
Again, all these lots are owned by the county, acquired through tax foreclosures.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we need a motion to adopt or not adopt.
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the county for the disposal of real property pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 160 Alpha, Tac 269.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is board appointments. Let's see what we have here. Tourism Advisory Board, that's Ms. Gilbert.
And I'd like to reappoint Janis Farr as my appointment for the Tourism Advisory Board.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is Library Board. Mr. Griggs and Ms. Gilbert both have an appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need to defer my appointment till the next meeting. The person I had slated to appoint is not eligible to serve on that board.
Okay.
I would move to reappoint Deborah Mountain on the Library Board. She's eligible for reappointment, I believe.
All right. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is Economic Development Board. I'm going to reappoint Sam Miller. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Keith Hall can be reappointed. He's a consensus appointment.
It's a move.
Okay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Then Roger Lambertson, I believe he had to resign from the board for personal reasons, so we need to appoint someone in his stead.
He rescinded his resignation.
He rescinded his...
Says he wishes to continue to serve.
Yes, and he also voiced that to me.
Okay.
Roger did.
Roger Lambertson.
He did.
Well, I'm satisfied with him rescinding. Is everyone else?
Aye.
Good with that.
Okay. Next is Whalehead Preservation Trust. We have a consensus appointment or reappointment. We have Sharon Twitty's is eligible for appointment.
I move that we reappoint Sharon.
Have a motion to reappoint. Do we have a second?
Well...
Now you can discuss it.
Let's say we had four other people that had put in, and I don't believe we've had the opportunity to discuss it with amongst ourselves unless, I see here four names, and unless, I'm told to the contrary, I don't know if we've had an opportunity as a board to discuss amongst ourselves relative to the consensus for that appointment.
And I would agree with Commissioner Griggs. We always like to interview and have the opportunity to talk for some new individuals in these boards, so we don't keep going on and on and on with the same individuals. It's good to, to see if, you know, so, I mean, I would like to spend a little more time than if we could.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Unless the motion is withdrawn, we're going to need to vote on it. Do you like to withdraw your motion?
I'm good with three points. Our consensus appointments were vetted with, like, real estate in mind, business, things like that, so I think that in that same context, if we're not going to go forward with reappointing Ms. Twitty is to, is to do some vetting on these other folks that have applied. I would ask some comment from Mr. Griggs, since he serves on that board. Any input or recommendations that you would have in this discussion before I rescind my motion to reappoint Ms. Twitty?
I have only one specific. I can't speak to the other three, but as the board well knows, the mission for Whalehead has been restated, and we're more focused now on a project to restore or complete the restoration of the historical boats and in moving forward with a project, project that will house them and further will hopefully extend to an interpretation of hunting lodges and gun clubs and some of the mainland heritage consistent with, with what the initial mandate was for the restoration of the Whalehead Club to begin with. To that end, one individual on here, Mike Doxy, was a member of, original member of the Wildlife Guild and is a native, has grown up here, and has been, is a, another repository of significant historical knowledge, both to the boats and to the hunting heritage here, and would, at least in my opinion, provide significant assistance to going forward with the project that we have now focused on as a county and as a, as the Whalehead Preservation Trust Board. I cannot speak to the other three, and that's why I mentioned that, to my knowledge, we have not had the opportunity to have a consensus. I could, I could, maybe I'm wrong. If there has been a consensus and I'm not aware of it, then I can stand corrected.
Well, hadn't some of these individuals just recently put their application in?
Two or three of them, I'm not for sure. Yeah. Yeah. I agree with Mr. Griggs. Mr. Doxy, matter of fact, he made mention the day that, of his retirement, that he would be interested in serving there, and as David alluded to, he certainly has a wealth of knowledge and background dealing with the decoy's boats and the, those types of things that are now part of the historical trust mission. So anyhow, like the chairman said, there's a vote or a motion and a second unless Mr. Gilbert wants to rescind it, and we'll guess, see where it goes from there.
Hearing the recommendation from Mr. Griggs, being on the Whalehead Trust, I would rescind my motion to reappoint Ms. Twitty and make a motion to appoint Mike Doxy.
We have a...
You second it.
For her to rescind the motion, does it take any further action, Mr. Ayk...
No, she, she can withdraw her motion.
Okay.
I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Just as a point of order, if I could, again, it, that would not necessarily cure what I had proffered as the fact that we had not discussed the four. There's, there's more than one. I spoke specifically to Mike because I've talked with Mike. I've not talked with the other three, so I'm not in a position to speak again as to a consensus, so I, my point still stands as to whether or not we have a consensus appointment. Or we've had the opportunity to speak as a board.
Actually, we have a motion. It has not been seconded. If it doesn't get a second, then it will die, and then you can.
Okay.
Have a consensus.
Sure.
To, um, to discuss it. Do we have a second? Okay. Ms. Gilbert, we will continue this, for lack of a second, to the next meeting, to give everyone a chance to, to, to discuss it. All right. I believe the Moayok Stormwater Appointments were, were next, and this also requires the full board's approval. We have five individuals. I believe they came from people who expressed an interest when you held Stormwater Meetings in Moayok. And I will open the floor to the board's discussion.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Um, on the Moayok Stormwater Service District Committee, are there other members that are currently on there? Or is this making up a whole new committee?
This would be a new slate of board members on a committee that the board has already created.
Okay, so we have no previous members on the Stormwater District prior to?
You, you do. Th- th- this is a, is a standing committee. It, it hasn't met in several years, but you do have a, a, an existing committee. And so this would be replacing those, that committee with these names.
Mr. Chairman, is it, is it, would it be advantageous if we could get a copy of the existing membership as it says today?
And continue this to the next meeting?
And then, the, continue this thing and, and then take a look at what the recommendations are and then be prepared to do something at the next meeting?
Yeah, unless the board objects, we'll just continue this to the next meeting, give staff a chance to give us a list of the existing members. Would that?
That, that would suffice. Thanks.
You, Ms. Gilbert?
And, Mr. Chairman, um, would it be appropriate to get the applicants, you know, the application that the applicants have provided as, on a consensus appointments?
Absolutely, it should be appropriate.
And, and it should be in the, in the packet, I think.
I didn't see it, but that doesn't mean.
If you could just provide the applications to us and the existing board members that have timed off. Is that what we want?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I believe, uh, Mr. Hall talked to me ahead of the meeting and said he had a couple of questions about, uh, budget amendments he wanted to ask before we approve the consent agenda.
There were two, uh, one being the Maple bathrooms. Let me find that on here.
Yes, sir. You, you have a budget amendment in your package tonight for a little over nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, the, the public bathrooms at the Picnic Shelter at Maple have been vandalized. Uh, and the board commissioners approved funding, uh, at the end of last year in the spring to repair those. Uh, that budget lapsed June thirtieth, so this budget amendment is a request to carry those forwards that were approved in the spring to carry those forward into this fiscal year, so this work can be undertaken.
Are we not, when we do the runway extension, that bathroom and that park area there will be very hard to get to or not as well traveled since we're, have replaced them with a new bathroom in a park area by the ball fields? I mean, is this money well spent?
This facility will remain after the airport project is done. The, the baseball fields, the, the tot lot, the bathrooms, the picnic shelter will all remain after that project is completed.
But will they have, will anybody have access to it until this project, the runway extension is completed, or will it be?
Yes, sir. It's, it'd be accessed by the road that's in front of the, um, COA Aviation, a- as you can now. That, that road will come up, uh, to this facility and.
To the general aviation building.
Yes, sir.
Do we need two parks that close together? Will we be, I mean?
Uh, I will say this. I was in those restrooms in the spring. They either need to be fixed or closed up. And if we're gonna have people out there on the facilities, they need a restroom. So.
Well, you still have the ballpark, you still have the playground, and you cannot have a facility like that without a restroom there. So it's better than that. It's, if we're not gonna provide a bathroom there, then that whole park needs to go away. Because the closest bathroom is all the way back at the ball fields, and that's a mile? Ballpark?
Uh, I don't think it'd be a mile, but it's certainly.
Little kids are not gonna go run to the restroom.
It's certainly a long distance, and, uh, uh, sort of the, the thinking would be, is that this, I mean, not only is it for public use, this, this baseball field, softball field, but it certainly can be there for practice for teams that if you had a tournament, um, the teams that are getting ready to play can go into this area. But it, it's, it's gonna remain active, and, uh, it's certainly our position that the bathrooms will still consider, uh, to serve a, a, a good purpose for being there.
And the bathrooms will be open during the daytime, or they'll be only open when somebody's using the facility, or?
They're open during the day now, and they will continue to remain open.
And that's Monday through Sunday, or just, uh?
I, I believe it's seven days a week.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The other question I have is, uh, the Whalehead Budget. I just wanted to double check on that, further down.
That would be in your, as you sit, is the TDA? If it is, is, if it's Whalehead funds?
It's under the budget amendment. I thought it was.
Uh, well, that's, that's, that's what we're, um, the TDA would be asked to sit for. Yeah, I think you have two budget amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, the second one would be in the TDA.
Okay. I'm good.
Sufficient. All right. Consent agenda.
Make a motion for approval.
Have a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Like sign. Motion carries. Commissioners report. Mr. Beaumont?
Um, I just wanna come out and say personally, uh, I got to watch, uh, Crawford's Fire Department respond to my house. Couple lessons learned that I would recommend to everyone. Um, first of all, reiterate something that the fire department says, year in and year out, and that's make sure you have fresh batteries in your, uh, smoke alarm. Um, you know, I was, uh, not awakened, but I was made aware of, uh, building smoke in the upstairs of my house, uh, smoke alarm going off. And I got to see just about every piece of fire apparatus Crawford has. And, uh, but, you know, not knowing what they were going into, better to arrive with overgear than not enough gear. And a structure fire that far removed, uh, would have been a significant issue. So, uh, again, I wanna thank the Crawford Fire Department for their quick response. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
As we know, through the storm, everybody, we got very lucky. Uh, I saw firsthand where everybody was out getting water, batteries and everything else for the storm, which is a great thing to see, that people were taking it seriously. We've dodged another bullet. I did also get a chance to see the fire department in action. There was a house on Tulsa Creek Road in Tulsa Bay Colony that caught fire. They were able to take and get it under control. There was very minor damage to the house on either side, yet they're very close. And you figure with the high winds, we were very fortunate. Uh, there were no loss of life, human life. I'm not sure. I hear maybe a pet might have passed away. But thank you again to these firemen and these paramedics that are out there and our safety, uh, law enforcement. They were braving the elements with that wind and did such a fine job doing what they do best, keeping us safe and sleeping well at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs?
Uh, one thing, I guess. The, uh, staff and myself, oh, I'm forgetting now, was it last Monday?
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Last Monday. Yeah, when you get old. The, uh, the, uh, a number of the staff, uh, and myself were invited for a tour of the Coastal Science Institute. If you're not aware of that, it is in beautiful downtown Juanchees. It's a significant, what? It's a significant, uh, it's a, are, are very impressive facility. It is, uh, a state facility that is or represents, well, first, the state of North Carolina, but I believe a consortium of five universities, three of which I remembered were NC State, UNC Chapel Hill and Greenville, I think, or East Carolina University. East Carolina University, if memory serves me, is the administrative, serves as the administrative entity for that consortium, that's, of that state, that state structure. And, uh, some of the things that I left with, and I'll probably ask, uh, Dan or Ike to, to jump in here and help me, is some of the things that I found particularly interesting is there's a tremendous amount of work that has been done by East Carolina University graduate students specific to the historical boats of Currituck County, hunting boats and fishing boats, uh, pictures, history, uh, just a tremendous amount of work. And the reason that this, I found this of particular interest is, of course, as I spoke to earlier, and as many of you will know, the Whalehead Preservation Trust, along with the county, is significantly now involved in, in the completion of the restoration boat program that Whalehead has been undertaking for, for some years. And the construction of a facility for which the purposes would be to display and interpret them additionally with, with a eye to some of the mainland historical, uh, history relative to the duck hunting clubs and stuff that were a mainstay of this county's history and indeed a lot of the locals, their, their livelihood and lives here. They are a wealth of information in that area. Their technology, I think, uh, Dan and Ike would agree with me, is top-notch and cutting edge. They have three D, three sixty, three D technology that can actually immerse you when you're standing there underwater, looking at some of the, uh, I was gonna say CAD restorations, but I think it's even more advanced than that of the monitor and some of the boats and the shipwrecks that are in this, that, that this coast is, is a treasure trove of, of history of sunken ships. Uh, I know I dove on the U eighty-five. That was, uh, they've done a significant, that was a German U-boat that was sunk in World War II. And anyway, some of the other, I found information that was of particular interest, I think, going forward, not only to this region, but to this county, is they've done a lot of research. They're geologists and marine, uh, historians, uh, I think as well as with, in conjunction with the Army, uh, Corps of Engineers, a significant amount of study relative to beach erosion and projections of where most likely there will be significant beach erosion in the future, based on what has happened in the past. Also incorporated in that are certain models that look to the future relative to warming of the temperature and, 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 and such changes. They also have an on-staff economist who has done just recently a position paper relative to a speech that he has done, and is, either has presented or is in the process of presenting in the next month or so, about the efficacy financially and otherwise of beach restoration, nourishment, and those sorts of things. And he spoke to that to some length. And as most college professors, I probably left, after listening to one, I left with more questions than I had answered. But nevertheless, they were very, I thought, good questions. I'm sure there was more, uh, could I, out of turn, ask, since we're on that subject, ask either Dan or Ike to add, 'cause I'm sure I missed some of the stuff. It was very informative. There is a force multiplication that will, that's the term I use for, will use a lot of the research and study that they have done to assist us with what we are doing relative to our boat restoration program, as I spoke to. Dan, Ike, can, uh, there was a lot more. Is there anything else that stuck out to you that would be cons, of significance and importance to us as a county?
The, um, I think there are a couple of things. They, they have some wonderful programs where they're working with our high school and, um, uh, uh, middle schools on how to, uh, take science and, and a hand-on approach. And they have various different workshops where our high schools can go down to and participate. Uh, they have several efforts underway to, uh, look at some very interest, interesting ways to extract energy from our oceans, uh, whether it's wave research, whether it is, uh, they've got a project going on, looking at the Gulf Current, uh, to extract energy from that. Uh, they work with communities to look at, uh, how to build and maintain sustainable communities in a fragile economic, or, or ecology of, as the Outer Banks. Uh, to that, that I think they actually have some resources that we might be able to work with. Uh, they're looking at how to extract electricity from the, the process of saltwater being close proximity to freshwater. In fact, that was a project they speak, they spoke directly to us that they'd like to undertake in Currituck, uh, with the, the proximity, the close proximity of the sound, uh, to the ocean up in the Corolla area, uh, to see i- i- there's a, some kind of chemical interplay that could potentially create electricity. Uh, they have the public policy, as Commissioner Griggs talked about, it, that they could help us work through, uh, various different topics. One that's, that's near and dear to the Outer Banks is talking about the best way to maintain and stabilize, uh, the, the beach strand. And so I think we have a very valuable resource right here in our backyard, and it was, uh, nice to see the staff go down. I think we made some good connections, and, and hopefully we can bring some of that, uh, uh, research up into the Currituck area.
If I could just add one thing that Dan spoke to about deriving energy from the, at first, we were talking about waves, and they talked about that. The Gulf Stream, and they, they were indicating their scientists there that were doing the reach, research, said that the wave action was not necessarily the future or the source for getting energy due, I think, to the shallowness of the continental shelf. And, but then he did go on to speak to the Gulf Stream, and we're one of two points, North Carolina, Currituck County, the Outer Banks. We're one of two points on the East Coast that's close enough to the Gulf Stream, the other being in Florida. One of two points on the East Coast, but with the proximity to the Gulf Stream is such that the potential is there to tap it. Now, to give you an idea of what the potential energy is in the Gulf Stream, they used the example, if you took all of the world's rivers, not just North America, but the entirety of the world's rivers, and multiplied them by a factor, I believe, of forty-five, that would be what the Gulf Stream represents. Of all the world's rivers times forty-five, and that's what's out there flowing by us. And of course, the concept is very, very complicated, and I didn't, wouldn't even pretend to understand it, and it's still in the making, is a way to house that or, or to turbines and to capture that, because the Gulf Stream's been running for as long as any of, well, history. So that's kind of exciting. And if I remember correctly, they talked that it may be sort of kinda ten years, maybe, where it could come to fruition. And that would be, huh, significant. But in any event, uh, sorry to the rest of you guys that couldn't have made it, but it was, it was e- e- enthralling to me. And with that.
That'll be it.
Mr. Idlet?
Uh, I, I, like everyone, or said earlier, thank the Lord, the storm went east of us and, and heading on north, and we didn't, uh, feel any of the, or much of the impacts of it. We did feel some impacts. Uh, I got a call this morning. It was pretty significant flooding and ocean sands. Uh, there's places where there's fourteen, sixteen inches of water standing. Uh, staff has been down and done some evaluation. County manager and staff has been working, trying to figure out ways to, to help. Uh, of course, we're under all kinds of, uh, regulations on whether you can pump or can't pump and that type of stuff. So anyhow, I've just asked staff if there's anything that we can do, let's please do it, uh, from a county perspective, to help them out. The damage reports up on the north beach area, dunes have took a beating big time. Uh, don't know of any property damage, haven't heard of any. Just there's a lot of cut-off dunes, a lot of loss of dunes, uh, a lot of water standing in roads, that type of thing. But, uh, other than that, from what I've heard today, that's the most significant stuff. Uh, that's about it, I guess. Knights Island fared well. Uh, just a lot of rainwater. There's some flooding issues over there. I, uh, a lady called me today, and, and I rode down and looked at it. The, the road was completely flooded. And ditches on each side of it were dry and just, and, and areas to where it's blocked up. So I've made a call to DOT, and she has as well, and if I don't get any help, I'll get with the manager and see if we can get some other help there to, to help straighten that out. Thank you.
Mr. Payment?
A couple of things. First of all, uh, the.
First of all, uh, the storm related, for years, we've always heard if, if the Outer Banks ever took a direct hit from a major hurricane, you know, what kind of economic impact would that have on the county? Um, and about a week ago, last Monday, we saw a lot of models that were going to bring that scenario true to Corolla, and we would have seen what it would have, what devastation we would have had with our economic, um, success we've had in the Outer Banks. That being said, that's the more that we, as a county, the community, the board of commissioners, everyone, have got to keep pushing for the economic development on the mainland, for looking for the businesses to here to help that. I mean, we dodged a bullet, we did, but, um, we're getting closer all the time, and Corolla has really, um, generated a lot of revenue for the county, um, but it's not going to take much, um, to, to stop that if we get that impact like we, we were on course to get. Um, the second item is on, I've heard a lot about fires. Well, I, I'm in the lower Currituck Fire Department, and we've discussed how many fire, structural fires and calls we've had this year in the past, it seems to have increased all over the county, uh, more than usual. And that just goes to emphasize that I want to reach out to the community again. Don't forget, this is a volunteer organization that we have in the county. Um, yeah, that, that we, you know, the more help we can get, the more apparatuses we can bring out to Mr. Beaumont's place there. But it takes individuals that can, uh, can show up, um, anytime of day, night, during dinner. Volunteers are always needed. I told them I would always, um, make this comment about contacting your volunteer fire departments and getting involved any way you can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
Um, the same thing. I want to echo with, um, what Mr. Payman and Mr. Beaumont said on our fire department. Um, they have done a tremendous job, and not only do they need volunteers, but if, if you have some financial backing that you can contribute to your local fire department when they do fundraisers, um, things like that, it, it, every dollar helps. So if you can contribute, you know, just a few dollars, um, those dollars will be stretched. Um, secondly, um, as we were preparing for the storm, I want to commend Mary Beth Noons, um, she is in the audience tonight, and I want to, um, I think I see her back there, congratulate her and her team for all that you all did, um, in, in preparation for the storm. It was advantageous for us to have the text messages that we've, we've gotten, um, with the county manager, um, and, and his staff, as far as getting those notifications to us as commissioners, to keep us abreast of what was going on. So I just want to reach out and really, um, thank those staff members, um, and the, the email blast, things like that. Um, just thank you very, very much, because it was a job well done, um, and you, you all deserve a, a big pat on your back. Um, the second, I am wearing pink tonight, even though, um, I'm, I'm not dressed in a suit tonight, um, but I want to just remind everybody that October is breast care, breast awareness, cancer awareness month, um, and it's a good time for everybody to, um, be reminded that they need to get preventives done. Um, if you get your preventative appointments taken care of, that can take care of a lot of, um, long-drawn-out illnesses that can come. Um, we, each one of us have been touched by cancer in our lives in some form or fashion. So, um, just remember those folks, um, and, and just support the Cancer Awareness Month.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing? Mr. Payman reminded me of something. As we talk about the fire departments, uh, I sat down and met again with, I was invited to come out with the Knights Island Volunteer Fire Department. They are in, they're in distress, big time. And, uh, their membership, they have like eight people that can respond, is what they have. And this, the community is aware, there's loads of concern. And I went out the other night, they asked me to come out and talk about alternatives. Uh, the county manager and myself and Chief Melton met with them, not the community, but met with the fire organization and, uh, the fire chief especially, a couple of months ago. Mr. Hall was there as well, Commissioner Hall was there, and Mr. Woody. And, uh, we, we tried to come up with some stopgap measures of, uh, a couple, well, one wants to enhance their EMS, uh, people that were there, make sure they were trained firefighters as part of that staff that was there. Same thing we've done in the past. There had been some issues with, uh, response times in the mutual aid agreement with the city of Virginia Beach, turnout time, there'd been an issue about, um, different levels having to approve the turnout to, to go respond there. So we asked them to go and meet with the city of Virginia Beach and, and get that straightened out. Uh, Mr. Scanlon has made me aware that that meeting did take place, and I've, I have been told that those issues have been taken care of. I asked Mr. Scanlon to please, uh, ask Chief Melton to prepare a report to us, to me especially, since it's my district, so I can see just what they did discuss and what they did decide. I'm waiting on that. Uh, but the, the department itself is, is in a very bad way. Uh, there was, it was, the community, like I say, turned out the other night, there was a lot of different people there talking about trying to figure out ways to enhance the, the volunteers and get people involved, but you, you only have so many people there. And it's, you know, the, the, the membership or the, the, the number of people on the island is just, you can only get so many volunteers with the people that live there. So I don't know where it's going to go, don't have a clue. Uh, we're, 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 we'll keep going. And I told them that the first deal certainly had to be to try to enhance the volunteer system and make it viable again. And if that didn't work, well, then we'd have to go to Plan B and look at what other alternatives we had. So I just wanted to make you aware of it, so that's where it's at. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just one more, I'll go on that. Folks, if you want to become part of these fire departments, the training is at no cost to you, the gear is not any cost to you. If you want to be part of an organization that helps people, and you can learn, and again, no cost to you, come on out and at least visit these fire departments and see what they have there and talk to these folks. Be part of a team, be part of a family. Again, you don't have to come in here with any pre-training or anything else. We'll take care of that. Am I correct, Mr. Payman?
That, that's correct. All the fire departments, they, they provide the training, they get you the essentials, the equipment, the gear. Um, if you've got the willing to do it, they'll take you or they'll train you as far as you'd like to go.
All right, to, in addition to what I was going to say, to piggyback off of that, we have talked several times about a volunteer coordinator for the fire departments that would coordinate and standardize training, centralize training, make sure there's sufficient training, and keep up with the records of training. And I've talked with different members of different fire departments, they see some benefits to that. But in addition to that, the county manager and I have been talking with COA about, um, analyzing exactly what their offerings are over here and how we can better enhance some of the opportunities for training, uh, from COA, so that a lot of our firefighters and, and actually law enforcement don't have to go to Wilson or wherever they have to go for all this training. Yeah, hatteras in different areas. So we have talked about that, and, and I think it would be apropos to have another discussion about the volunteer coordinator. And this board needs to make a decision, do we want somebody that takes some of that burden off the fire departments, that goes out and recruits, makes sure the volunteers have their hours, and, and coordinate the training or not? But I think we're at the point, we need to have a serious conversation about that. And unless the board objects, I'd like to ask the staff to prepare that conversation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd agree with that, because we're also seeing a lot of high school graduates starting to getting involved too. So as far as making contact in the school systems, um, is a good, you know, good plan for that as well.
I'm glad you brought that up, because we also had conversations with the, who just left superintendent, um, Ms. Ozma?
Osman?
Yeah, Osman, um, about doing a, a course through the high schools to try to get these young people involved, to get them community-oriented and thinking about volunteering, so when they reach of age, they'll have some training. And I believe they're all on board with doing that, and I believe Mr. Scanlon might can give a little more detail on that, maybe?
Uh, well, they are on board with it. I think they're looking, excuse me, to get the, the state approvals to develop that curriculum. And I believe they were talking about, uh, next year being able to, uh, consider having a block that would, a junior firefighter or, or something through the school program, but that they are moving forward with that.
Mr. Chairman?
And, and, uh, Chief Melton has presented to me a, a plan, uh, to restructure in such a fashion that he could, uh, end up with a position that would be tasked with the volunteer coordinator. So I'll be putting that together and presenting that to you, but the, the chief has actually already prepared that and presented that to me.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the fire advisory board met last week, and that was one of the topics that we discussed at the fire board. So that is, that's what led to, I think, Mr. Scanlon being provided that. So that, that's coming back.
Mr. Chairman, as I see, there's, there's two main issues, two big-time issues that this coordinator that we're talking about is, can solve. And I've been saying it for two, three years, and you know I have. And, and it's, the, the, the training piece of it is a tremendous burden on these individual fire departments, each and every one of them. They can talk about, they can get it in-house and this, that, and the other, they can't get it all in-house. There, you know, either that, if they do, they've got a, a whole bunch of people they've got to train. COA's got to have 10 people to bring a certified instructor over here to teach a class. If you have less than that, they don't teach the class, because they don't get paid and, and they can't, they just can't put it on. And, and it's, it's a tremendous burden there. And for people getting off work and then driving all the way to COA to, to go to school, I mean, you're talking, to get someone certified in, in the, in the, in the quote-unquote, uh, pro-board certification process, Lord have mercy, from a volunteer standpoint, it would take them two years probably to get there. And so you-
And, and Commissioner, I'm sorry.
You, you just, someone who just would handle that training and coordinate that training for everyone. And then the other piece of it is the recruitment piece of it. Be active out into communities, into schools, and doing the recruitment. That's, I'm telling you, it's a, it's a job that will be well worth every dollar we spend on it.
Well, I, I do, I can verify, Mr. Scanlon is having regular conversations with Dr. Diedemeyer about these very issues that we're discussing tonight, and I think they're working towards resolution.
And the other thing, Commissioner Eillet, when, when we were on the fire EMS board back in the day, one of the things that that training coordinator brings to the table is we actually lose points for not being able to track all of the training that's going on. And so when we looked at what affects our ISO rating and the, and what it costs to improve your ISO rating, that training coordinator, we identified at the time that that was probably one of the cheapest ways to improve our ISO rating that we've possibly come up with.
That's right. I forgot, Mr. Beaumont was on the fire advisory board back then. What's that, it's been three years ago? Three or four years ago?
Back in the day.
When it was first brought up.
And I would say-
And firemen were fire-
I will say one, one other thing. In my discussions with the fire chiefs and different ones in the fire department, there is a, a common theme that several of them have brought to me as well, is they would like to know what the level of service is the county would ask for them in their contract, so that they're not necessarily continuing to chase ISO ratings and, and different things. At the county, I don't know how to do it, but we need to develop a level of services as a minimum for these contracts for the fire departments, so that they know exactly what they need to do from a training, equipment, and, and manpower.
That's, that's one of the things that was laid out in the assessment that we asked to have done. That is, that is step one. That's one of the most important pieces to determining what our fire service is going to look like in Currituck County. The level of service, and then they develop a standard cover which will meet the level of service. That's how it's done, that's what you've got to do. And this, the level of service is contingent upon the, the wishes and the wants and the costs of the community and the people in the community. What, what is their expectations from a fire department? Level of service can be anything from a 20-minute response time 90% of the time to, for a paid department in a, in a, in a, uh, urban area, it could be seven-minute response time 100% of the time. I mean, that's, that's your level of service, that, the expectations on how you're going to get people there, what type of equipment is going to be a part of that response team, and, and that, that's certainly something that's got to be laid out and determined.
Well, we need to, uh, maybe we need to have a work session soon, Mr. Scanlon, to kind of pull all this together, because the volunteer fire department saved the citizens of Currituck multiple millions of dollars in the budget every year. And if we can spend a few dollars to help make them, keep them viable and support them, I think it's well worth our effort and, and time spending to put that together to help.
Stop and look at it like this, Mr. Chairman. Probably costs us overall about $3 million a year for fire services. If we went to a full-paid fire service in Currituck County, it would, it'd be hitting on $15 million.
That's correct. All right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I've requested from the manager that he go ahead and set up a meeting with Chief Melton with us, as commissioner, so I'd like to get that, get that in place as soon as possible.
When you're prepared to bring us something. And the last thing, so we'll move on. The last thing, as I see Ms. Noons is in the audience, I was up here Thursday observing the staff, Sheriff's Department, Chief Melton, uh, the Forest Service, um, who am I leaving out, Mr. Scanlon? Um, it's multiple-
Public Works, NCDOTs-
Public Works, NCDOT. There was multiple people up here as they were preparing for what could have been a bad situation. And the professionalism, the, um, demarcation of who was responsible for what and when, and communicating amongst the different ones was very well-coordinated, very professional. And I have no doubts, had we had a storm, while we could not have done anything about the damage, but the aftermath of what the county would be responsible for in coordination with FEMA, the state, local resources would have been done in a very professional and proficient manner. And I do want to thank the staff, the ones that are present, as well as the ones who, who are not here tonight for their preparation. They go through drills, they plan, they practice, and, but when something happens, you can't plan for every contingency, but I feel fully confident they would have taken care of their job and what they were responsible for. So I didn't want to add that. And with that, Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. First of all, I thank you for your comments, and I strongly echo the, your sentiments towards the staff. We, we have a, a very dedicated and, uh, committed staff, and as was mentioned, uh, I believe last Wednesday, they were predicting a strike, uh, hit on Corolla with the eye going right over Currituck County. So, uh, the staff does have to drop their day-to-day activities, and they all assume a different role and responsibility in emergency management. And so I greatly appreciate, uh, the effort that they transitioned into that role. And, and we were very fortunate that the storm, uh, did turn and, and go out to sea, but, uh, even though it did, the county staff is still engaged in this effort. Um, we did have, although we were very blessed, uh, some property owners have experienced some damage. Uh, I encourage them to contact the, the building inspections department. Permits may be required. Uh, that staff is working on efforts to expedite any permit that might be needed because of storm damage. Um, if you have a, a lot of what we're seeing is perhaps docks, piers, or, or walkways into the, the sounds or the, the ocean, um, if you have those, as long as it was a step, a board, basically a horizontal structure, you could put that back on without a permit. But if it was anything to do with the handrail or structural, uh, you will need to have a permit, and we are looking, again, to expedite those permits. Uh, we are working with KAMA. KAMA currently has a prohibition on any beach pushes, and so we've actually had several communities ask us about how to start moving back to establishing the dune line, and we're working on that effort, although right now there is a moratorium on that. Uh, there is also, for the most part, uh, the county got through the high water, although we had some localized flooding, most of that seemed to have released yesterday and today, although the ocean sands community, uh, does have a, a significant amount of standing water, mainly around where the lake is, although there's other areas in ocean sands. Uh, we've had staff up there all afternoon. Uh, there is a little bit of misnomer, uh, there is a, a, a public belief, uh, that once it reaches 14 inches, we are allowed to pump, and that's a county call. That's not literally what the, the, the policy requires. Um, 14-inch is just a, 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 a benchmark. Uh, we actually have to find, uh, that there is an imminent, uh, public health and safety danger in place before we can even contemplate pumping. Uh, we have been working through that, trying to get that declaration, and we have not been successful. Uh, we're continuing to work on that. This afternoon, we put another proposal in front of the state under the public health, um, and that has not been successful so far. So at this point in time, uh, we have not been authorized to move forward with pumping, but it's an effort that we are still moving forward on. But I just encourage anybody that probably had some property damage to contact the building inspections department, because permits may be required.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This time, I'm going to move to public comment. We have, uh, Ms. Mary Etheridge signed up, and we'll open the public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846- Good afternoon. My name is Mary Etheridge and I live at 846 Charbar Row. Today I'm going to do something that I keep telling myself not to do. I promised myself, no matter how upset I got with the county, that I needed to stick to what the county did to me, putting a junkyard in my backyard and costing me thousands of dollars when everyone told the commissioners that it was wrong. But sometimes we just need to speak up. A few weeks ago, I was going south on Currituck Highway and I cannot believe our county is allowing DOT signs to be flashing 34 minutes, 38 minutes to Kitty Hawk. Now I can see this if traffic is backed up or during a storm, but in September, folks, all we hear at these meetings is how much we are pushing tourism. Spending money on bathrooms at the colored school, spending money on the horse farm, spending, spending, spending. But you commissioners are allowing a sign telling tourists in just 34 minutes, you will be enjoying Dare County and spending your money there. Are you kidding me? We are spending thousands of dollars on the horse farm. We are spending thousands of dollars to build a bathroom. And you're not up in arms over DOT telling tourists, just you wait, it's only 34 minutes until beautiful Dare County. Maybe some of our tourist dollars would be well spent telling visitors what they could be enjoying during that 34-minute drive. And speaking of that drive, whatever happened to improving our corridor? And speaking of improvements, in a few months, we will be co- conducting elections in North Carolina. It's a presidential election plus state offices, local offices, and even some of you are up for reelection. So you can be assured that it will be a very large turnout here in Currituck County. Uh, the people who vote, around one-third vote early, and that number is growing yearly. For Currituck County, we're talking about between 3,000 and 4,000 citizens of the county going through the door of the election board office during each of the elections, the primary and the general elections. I am sure no other office in the county sees this many visitors a year. I'm sure most of you go to the election board office to file for office or vote and never think about anything election-related unless it relates to you. Well, the other day, I did stop by the election board office and it is really in need of improvement. But I don't know how much improvement can be done to a trailer or how you can make it larger since they are running out of room. But I can honestly say it is one of the worst-looking offices in this county that serves more citizens of the county. So commissioners, maybe you need to look at the election board office and see if you're as proud of the building serving the voters of Currituck as you are the animal shelter. And this is nothing against the animal shelter, but are you kidding me? A multi-million dollar building serving the animals and serving the citizens of Currituck County, a trailer? Thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion to recess the Currituck County Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, Mr. Scanlon, I believe Ms. Kugler's here. By the way, Ms. Kugler, you also were in that, uh, emergency management meeting. I didn't mean to slight you.
That's fine.
Yes, sir. You have, uh, two budget amendments for, uh, your consideration tonight, both dealing with occupancy tax. Uh, the first one, uh, that you have actually has two distinct pieces to it. Uh, one of those is, uh, at a previous board of commissioners meeting, the board of commissioners authorized those funds that had been previously budgeted towards the Wellhead Trust with a specific restriction. Uh, all that money could be put together and go to the boat building program. Um, when we had transitioned the oversight of the project back into the county, uh, that budget was actually wiped out. And so in the budget amendment, the first one you have, you see reestablishing the 62,000, 853. That was the amount of money out of the 800,000 in that fiscal year that went to the boat program. It's being reestablished so that it can be committed to the boat program. The second piece of that is the 29,000, 588. The, in a settlement agreement, agreement from previous years, Outer Banks Conservationists who operates the lighthouse has to make a financial payment to Wellhead Trust annually for their use of public assets, which is predominantly, they use the bathrooms there at the Wellhead Club, uh, or, uh, on the property at Heritage Park. And so they have to make a financial contribution to that. And what you're seeing in this budget amendment is now that the county staff and we are overseeing the operation of Heritage Park, that money is being transferred from the trust into the county so the county can undertake that work. Uh, and I believe we're, we're doing some, uh, repairs to the gazebo roof. We're doing some repairs to the bulkhead, um, and to the, the, um, uh, the guardhouse. And so that's the 29,000 is actually money being transferred into the county so that we can undertake that work. Uh, the second budget amendment that you have in there is unfortunately the air conditioning system at the visitor center. I guess thankfully, at the end of the season, it decided to die out on us, but uh, it has died. Um, and we are looking to, uh, appropriate monies to replace the air conditioning unit in the visitor center in Corrala. And I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you might have about either one of the budget amendments.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Two. If I could, you spoke to the 29,000, roughly 29,000 that's coming from the OBC settlement, which was a court-ordered settlement, what was that, almost 10 years ago? Roughly. I mean, it was a while back. And just for clarification purposes, that OBC settlement money, the 29,000 that you spoke to now, tonight, was money that has always been over dependency of, or the issuance of that OBC settlement directed towards the maintenance, as you said, of the facilities out there on Wellhead property. So there has, this budget amendment changes really nothing except the mode of, I guess it would be housekeeping, it would be a general housekeeping term or, or mode of how it's transferred.
Well, the money never came directly to the county and the county never undertook the work directly. The money always transferred to the trust and the trust did the work and therefore it was never budgeted at the county level. And so now that the county is overseeing the operation and maintenance of the property, uh, we need to receipt that money in. And so that's what you see. You see a revenue source and a, and a corresponding expenditure.
At the risk of needlessly complicating the issue, I guess, the county has always owned the Wellhead property. It has always maintained it through the $800,000 appropriation that the county has provided the Wellhead. So, and that's, this money was utilized for that as a result of the OBC settlements, my understanding. So it's just a matter of how it's being, not what it's being applied on, but how it's being applied.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted, there's no big revelations or changes relative to that?
Yeah, no changes or deviation from what the settlement agreement required stipulation on how that money can be spent.
And that's the point I, that's the point I was trying to make.
All right. Any other questions?
Chairman, I just have one. You, you talking about the AC unit in the visitor center? Is that a shared unit with the ABC store or is it separate units?
I'm gonna have to, I, I'm, I'm not familiar enough with that system to know if it's a standalone system or not.
Well, I'm, the reason I'm bringing it up, if it's a shared system, well, they should be responsible for everything, shouldn't they?
I don't believe it's a shared system, but I, I don't know that to be a fact.
I don't know. I just brought it up.
I don't know that either. I did ask that question. We are assuming that it's two separate units, but I can't find that out.
It, it, I'm, I'm sorry, is that about the ABCs? They shared with, uh?
I just asked, did they share one unit for the whole building?
I don't believe they do, but I don't know that to be a fact.
Well, doesn't that office, doesn't the ABC share, don't they pay the county rent for that building?
They, they pay rent for the facility, yes.
Oh, do they? Okay. All right.
They, they pay rent for the facility, so I don't know.
We won't double charge them. That's fine.
Yeah. Well, I'm on the ABC board, so I don't want to go back and tell them-
I just wanted to get your butt pressed.
That they gotta pay for something they're already paying for.
Gene Greger wouldn't like that.
I'm assuming that they're different units because they did, it, they did get very hot in the visitor center and we didn't hear any complaints from the ABC store side.
Sales were up.
The, the ABC store has a, a newer unit in it.
Okay. All right. Any further questions?
They have their own unit.
Hearing none, we need a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval. Second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn the Tourism Development Authority and reconvene the Currituck County Commissioners Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And before we have a motion to adjourn, I did not ask if, I apologize to anyone in the audience that wishes to speak. I did not ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak in a public comment. If there is, I certainly will recognize you at this time. Hearing none, I will properly close the public comment and-
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed.